Salute, ladies.
Praise the Lord to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Listen.
You're P H Scott?
That wasn't right. I changed, no, yes.
We're having a little technical problem, so we'll be starting in just a minute, please.
This is why I said we shouldn't have been away from the bank.
Very good.
Okay, roll call if you're present, please. Tap your board, please. Pete Arnold, David Stouts, Mike Meredith. We do have a form.
Scott, this thing's off again. It'll be deal, and I'll do it annually.
Is it, is it working?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Number one on the agenda is for us to approve our agenda, but tonight we've got something a little bit different. We've got a couple of resolutions that need to be moved in front of another resolution. And I need amendments for that. We need to move Resolution 18 in front of Resolution 15. And we have a motion and a second to move Resolution 18 in front of Resolution 15.
Do we keep the same resolution number?
Pardon me?
Do we keep the same resolution number, change it?
The same resolution number, yes.
I hope you change, A and B or something.
Okay, all in with the 18 in front of Resolution 15.
Sixty.
Okay, if you're in favor of the amendment, please vote for the amendment.
Senior.
Request to speak is by the way option.
Me too.
It's for this.
I don't know about the sign or what.
There you go.
Yes. Now can you vote, Rocky?
Yes.
Okay, and we need another amendment for the same reason. We need to move Resolution number sixteen in front of Resolution twelve.
Motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Field and a second by Commissioner.
Mr. Murphy.
Murphy. Okay, there's a little glitch in this computer, so Mr. Melton, you can't make this resolution. It's going to accept, so I need someone else as the, make the motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Flock. Resolution sixteen in front of twelve.
Eighteen in front of sixteen.
We're ready to vote now for the Second Amendment. Now we're voting on the agenda as we just approved it. You're voting for the agenda as it has just been amended. Okay, number two on our agenda is the Citizens Forum. We have a gentleman that is going to talk to you by video. His name is Robert Jackson. We got that?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Ready to go?
Okay, Mr. Jackson, you're ready to speak.
Okay, my name is Robert Jackson, and I live just outside of Big Sandy, and I'm also, and I wanted to address, and specifically Flock as a vendor for a couple of minutes. And Flock, I think that either a month before, they were the LPR vendor, and they were asked to directly legally challenge. Representative for Flock said, no, I mean, we have two thousand, over two thousand cameras in Tennessee. There's been, just that you can look up, but the, that we are not infringing on anyone's personal privacy. So the problem, it was, it was, you can almost, you can go to Chat GPT and type in, is Flock having any legal challenges? And they're having major, right now, Institute of Justice by Little Court in Virginia. I don't know if you guys remember the Institute of Justice years ago, really kind of slammed us hard. They, they took away the right for the wildlife resource people, filed a warrant. Guys, when they are serving a warrant, they have to wear body cameras. So these are some pretty heavy, um, in Benton County, and gone all the way to the Supreme Court in Tennessee and, and won that case. So that's just app, that it's not being legally challenged. The other thing is where he said we're not infringing on anyone's personal privacy.
Mr. Jackson, we're having trouble hearing you. Scott Hill is going to call in and see if he can get a better, um, voice.
Okay.
Can you answer your phone, Mr. Jackson?
Oh, sure.
Yes, we can hear you. If you'll mute your microphone on your computer, and then everybody can hear you now. We can still see you.
Okay, that works.
I do apologize, but go ahead and start over your speech.
Okay, so my name is Robert Jackson, and I live just outside of Big Sandy, and I'm also a business owner in Big Sandy, and I just wanted to speak to the license plate readers, specifically Flock as a vendor for a couple of minutes. I think it was last month, or maybe it was the month before, that Flock came in as the LPR, LPR vendor, and was asked a direct question, is this tech being legally challenged? His response was, no, I mean, we have two thousand, over two thousand cameras in Tennessee. There's been some random lawsuits in Texas that you can look up, but the whole deal here is that we are not infringing on anyone's personal privacy. So the first thing is, there was a major legal challenge. That's not true. If you look up on Chat GPT, is Flock being legally challenged? There's a major legal challenge out of Virginia that's going to the federal court, and they're being challenged by the Institute of Justice. And I don't know if anybody remembers the Institute of Justice, but a couple of years ago, they're the folks that came to Benton County and took the case to the Tennessee Supreme Court, and now the wildlife guys, they can't go onto anybody's property without a warrant, and when they're on the property with a warrant, they have to wear body cams. So these people came to Benton County, and, and they really had an impact. They won their case, and they won it in a, in a huge way. So these are the guys that are now challenging the, the Flock cameras and the LPRs. The other thing he said is that we are not infringing on anyone's personal privacy. But if you look up some of the things that have, have gotten Flock into trouble, there was a Kelsey police lieutenant who used a Flock over a six-month period to stalk his ex-wife. There's the Kansas police chief that's, that used the cameras to spy on his ex-girlfriend 164 times. There's the Orange City officer, he's a lieutenant, who was caught stalking several with the Flock system. In Texas, they had the police that were using the system to track a, a young woman who had an abortion, and they didn't feel that was right, and they used the sister, system to track her down and arrest her. And then in Grand Rapids, it was shown, Michigan, it was shown that the Flock system was used to track protesters in a protest that was some issue that went the wrong way of, of the people that were tracking them. So, A, it's not just vehicular information. They're definitely using this to infringe on people's personal privacy, and there's definitely a major case. It was just yesterday that Flock tried to join the case and kind of interfere with the case, and they were told by the federal judge, no. So this is cleared just 100% honest way to go to federal court for them to put restrictions on how the system is used. So there's a whole bunch of cities. There's Scarsdale, Arizona, Denver, Colorado, Austin, Texas, who are canceling their Flock contracts. At the end of this month, those three cities are no longer going to renew their contract with Flocks. So I, I'm not saying that we don't need the LPRs, or that it's a good thing or a bad thing. I am not real happy with Flock as a vendor. I feel that they lied to us. They lied to a direct question from the commissioners, and they lied to everybody in the county. And then I would just think it would be best to hold off on this until the IOJ case is settled. I'd hate to see us put a whole bunch of money into this, buy it, and then in six months not be able to use it. So I, I guess all I'm asking for is maybe like a six-month pause, just to see what happens with, with the IOJ case. It's likely that they're, they will allow the LPRs, but there'll be restrictions on how you can use it, how you can log in, what training is required, and what kind of warrants are. So I don't think it's going to go away, but I think it would be a lot safer if we just held off until the IOJ case went through. That's it? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jackson, for your information. Can you hear me? I guess he could hear me. Okay, next, before we move on to the, we don't, we don't have any other citizens that signed up, so before we move on there, I'd like to recognize that Mr. Monty Blue is here, representative from U.S. Congressman Dustoff's office. He's here visiting us tonight. Just want to recognize him.
Thank you.
Number three is the Commissioners' Forum. We have, do we have a commissioner? Mr. Price, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Turn this around, see the floor. Good evening, everybody. My name's Jerry Price. I'm a commissioner from the sixth district, northern end of Benton County. I'm not going to be talking about anything that's on the agenda tonight, but I do have something that I feel is very important to talk about. This recently came up, and it can be a good thing if it's done correctly. This came from the Benton County Solid Waste Committee Board meeting. These are the minutes from August the eighth, and this may have already been taken care of itself, but I still want to address it because it's, deals with an issue that I think we need to be a lot more informed before we start making decisions as a body. Meeting was called to order. I'm going to move right on down. I'm not going to discuss who was there. Number five, the property for a convenience center in Big Sandy. Did anybody know that was coming up? Anybody in the crowd know? Frank, I know you do. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Various parcels were discussed as potential locations for a new convenience center in Big Sandy. Concerns included: traffic visibility, nobody wants to drive by and look at waste, adjacent property owner opposition. I would be the first one to be opposed to have any kind of a convenience center in my backyard or my front yard, because my property values are going to suffer. Accessibility, it was very accessible, and political considerations. I don't know where that comes from, but okay, that was one of considerations. A potential parcel at the split of Lick Creek and Dambler Road, this is near the Red Top Market. If anybody, I've never heard it called that. I've always heard it called the Sportsman One Stop, right there in the forks of the road between Lick Creek Road and Dambler Road, was discussed as an ideal location. Folks, if I'm a neighbor right there, that's not the ideal location. Not for me, it's not. So let, let's be objective. The owner of the property may be willing to split the parcel and sell the front section excluding the building. In other words, the old store. So I don't know how we would know that unless he's been contacted and talked to. It's okay. Ownership of the parcel, fair pricing and zoning, grant opportunities were discussed. There'd be need for fencing, employee shelter, and utilities. That was all addressed, and it would be a manned facility. A motion was made and seconded to authorize the mayor, the county mayor, to negotiate an option to purchase the parcel in Big Sandy for the convenience center. Now, keep in mind, there were no commissioners do about it. The Alderman in Big Sandy did not know about it. The citizens of Big Sandy did not know about it. So just saying. The motion passed unanimously. Oh, I skipped the line. The purchase would be contingent upon successful acquisition, acquisition of funding in the form of a grant. Grants are good. They're great. They work real good. But depends on how much the grant is, depends on what the matching funds are. This is something that we need to know as a, as a governing body, so we can address this. So the convenience center grant opens next May, with applications due by June 30th, and it goes on to talk about recycling equipment, grants, et cetera. Planning ahead will be necessary for grant qualifications, including obtaining options. Now, please correct me, anybody here from Big Sandy. You pay water, sewer, and waste pickup, correct? All in one bill? So that, that's part of the bill inside. This is inside the city limits, Big Sandy. Are we, are we completely opposed to having a convenience center down there? No, absolutely not. Be a good thing. It's in the right place, but not in a residential area. Scott, would you put the first picture up, please? That's looking just to the left. It's where we're talking about. That's inbound on Lick Creek Road. Next picture, please, Scott. That's one of the houses across Lick Creek Road. Next picture, please. That is coming in, I'm driving in on Dambler Road, and that is a house right across the road. Next picture, please. That's looking across the road from the one I just showed you, back toward the, the intersection of Dambler and Lick Creek. Next picture, please. Let's go the other way. There's another house across the road. One more, please, Scott. That was taken Thursday morning, right out here at our landfill. Unmanned, nobody around. I don't know about you all, well, that's five times I've been to the landfill, nobody was there. The containers are completely full. The slides where you drop your trash, look where, they're completely full. Stuff's starting to overflow out into the parking lot. That's not acceptable. So if we can't do a better job than that at our landfill, how are we going to manage a convenience center in Big Sandy or anywhere else it can? Any questions? Comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
As I directed when you called me, the representatives from the sixth district need to help us locate something, because we're trying to make it more convenient.
Correct.
We don't have to drive 15, 17 miles or more.
Did I, did I offer an option?
And, yeah, but as with everything, even if your option, would still have to come before the board.
Correct.
And we'd have to look into it. All this is just exploratory. Nobody said, so.
Frank, I, whenever, whenever we start a, still in the bay, he can go cut a deal for a, you know, a negotiation with the landowner. That's going pretty far before anybody notices about it, in my book.
May, may I speak on that?
You know what?
Wait just a minute. Mr. Lashley has the floor.
Thank you.
Anytime we do this, we're going to have to give the authority for our county executive to look into it. We can't make a decision without gathering facts. As a solid waste board member, that's not for us five or six to do. We need one point person. So if the mayor takes that and says, I've talked to the owner, and he said he would do blank. Now, we can do this with a number of properties. If we can get some recommendations of, of, you know, those that live up there, that's great. But this has been going on for, since 2017, 2018, looking for places?
I didn't know.
Okay, well, get involved and help us come sit and.
I'll do it.
Okay.
I'll be there.
All right, we'll see you there.
I will be there.
Don't make up some excuse.
Sure. No, I'll be there. But no, thank you. And I yield the floor.
Mayor, you have the floor.
Mr. Price?
Yes, Mayor.
I would just had a response to that. Mr. Lashley pretty much hit the nail on the head. Solid Waste Board is not voting to do anything itself, look into this. We had the lady from the Northwest Tennessee Development District over Solid Waste at that meeting, and she was letting everyone know that they know that we had applied for this before in 2017 or 2018, and Benton County was looking to put a convenience center in Holiday in Big Sandy, and it fell through at that time. I think we just didn't get the grant. But she was there. She was letting this board know that there was a grant coming open next May, and that there could be a possibility. She wanted them to know that and for them to go forward with looking to see about the feasibility of us even applying for the grant. So discussion after she told them that was, you know, you have to have the property. We have some property in Holiday. Do we know if that's the right place in Holiday? We don't. That's part of this committee's job, is to find out if we have property, where the property is, how much it costs, and then bring that to the full commission, the state, the steps that you would take normally for something like that. So this committee was just acting on what the state had given them the advice that night. It was not just that one piece of property. You got some pretty nice pictures of it. But a five-member board with one member present was discussing this. They said, yeah, we need to go find some property in Big Sandy for sure. Why don't everybody go out and try to figure out what would be a good location, talk to the people and all, and that one location come up. I'm sure that the people that was there that night didn't know it was in the city. It's ruled out because it's in the city. We, we wouldn't want to put it in the city. I think that everyone that got kind of tore up about this this week has already been told that. They know that. But if the people of Big Sandy, the people of Holiday would like to have a convenience center, it's not like the old dump, dumpsters that we used to have. It was just sitting on the side of the road. The people would set on fire and everything. It would be a nice facility with a 300, 300 chain link fence with the gate, have cameras, and it would be manned when it was open. It was, it's being discussed simply to make it convenient for the residents in Big Sandy that live so far from the one that you showed the picture of in Camden that we do not operate. Waste management operates that for us, and I think it's a blessing. It may not look perfect every time you're up there, but at least we can dump for free there. But it would be manned by Benton County on the two convenience centers that we're talking about, and it would be fenced and gated off when it's not open. It would be manned when it was open. They would have cameras to show if anybody's trying to break in and, and burn it and stuff like they used to. So it's exploratory at this point. The grant don't even open till May. Each board does not come to the full commission and say, I want y'all to vote on whether you want me to look at this or not. These boards come and make their recommendations after they've checked it out and tried to figure out what the best thing. figure out what the best thing is. Then it'll come to the property and economy and budget and full commission if we decide to go forward with it. But they're just looking into it right now to see if it's something that we would want to go forward with since it had been addressed in 2017 and 2018.
That's a good response, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. But still, we got to the point where this was an ideal location and we were looking to buy it and I don't want it in my front yard. I don't think anybody in this room wants.
You can, you can keep twisting it that way. But we, we've told you when you, when you.
I'll go over the top of it, Mark. That'd be sandwiched. You did that all the time. You're not going to.
Say what you want to, sir.
Thank you very much for your permission. Who's going to man this? Who's going to take the trash from point A to point B? Who's going to get that contract? This is something we need to talk about and I don't want to bring it all up right now. There's a lot of questions, but I don't want anybody in Big Sandy that there's a lot who wants to. Uh, nobody in Big Sandy thinks that they threaten that this is going to show up in their front yard. According to these minutes that I didn't write, it was way on down the road towards happening. Thank you.
Okay, can I speak now?
Of course.
It, it's not way on down the road from, I mean, it is way on down the road from happening. That's what committees are for. That's why we formed committees is to bring the ideas that they have and the different things that we need to do for Benton County to help our citizens, to bring an idea to the full commission. You can't bring an idea when it's just an idea. You have to have a few facts and that's what this board is doing. I think they're doing an excellent job. We've got a great board there and I wish you'd have a little patience. And you can, hey, will you let me speak instead of buttoning in on me, sir? While I'm speaking? You do that all the time. No, I, I think the board's doing a great job and that's why we have boards is to bring all these ideas. The people of Big Sandy, the people of Holiday would be blessed to have a convenience center there and that's all they're looking into is the feasibility of it. Thank you for, well, you don't have to keep speaking while I am, but thank you for the time.
Let's move on. Do we have another, um, commissioner? Okay. First one is Commissioner Fowler.
Yeah, I was, I was listening to that. I know a while back, uh, the board talked about that putting the convenience centers in. At that time, but is that not waste management's in their contract? I meant to come by your office and we pull waste manager's contract. They would put convenience centers there. But you're talking about people in Benton County manning this place? You know, we're already talking about on property, heard chatter of raising property tax. Will this come out of taxpayers' dollars and somebody sits there and mans that? I mean.
Can you answer that?
Hang on, let's get done. But on the waste management side of it, is it not their responsibility? If we did have a convenience center set up, is that in their contract or not? I mean, I don't know. I, I just didn't have time to look at it. But the other side of it on manning those, I, I know, I know it'd be a great thing, but countywide is going to pay, would they have to pay for that? You're going to tell me there's going to be grants out there? Grants are going to run out just like everything else does in the grant world. But what's going to happen down the road with that as far as how will you pay for someone to do that? And also in Big Sandy, understand already, they have a, a, uh, someone hired to go around and pick up all their garbage in the city limits. Uh, will they be dumping that garbage in that convenience center? Will it be something? You know, there's lots of things right there. But the main thing is who will pay for the convenience centers if we do do one in Big Sandy and one in Holiday? How, who will pay for that once the grant runs out? If there is a grant, that's all the main question.
I think you answered your own questions with, uh, a bunch of questions.
Yeah.
That's, that's what this is. It's an exploratory committee looking into the feasibility and the cost of putting convenience centers in Big Sandy and Holiday.
Yeah.
To be discussing this in a full commission meeting after only one meeting, when the state comes in and says this grant's open, y'all need to look into it and see if you want to do it. I mean, we had one meeting. How can we come before the commission and do anything when they haven't even met back to say what we have found out? We don't know what it's going to cost. That's what we're looking into. We don't know. But no, the landfill is not responsible for convenience centers. It's not in their contract. So that's why the state is wanting to help out. They put them over in two or three different counties and it's helped so much. The state paid for getting them put in. The equipment, the land, the fencing, the cameras. But yes, there was, the county will be responsible for manning them and taking them from that convenience center to the landfill, which we have free dumping, so it should be the trucking. But to answer your question, you kind of colluded the, um, story.
It's run together on.
It, it's kind of all run together, but Big Sandy is just like the city of Camden. That has nothing to do with county convenience centers. They have a contract with the company that picks up the garbage that they're, in their city limits and their people pay on their water bills for that, just like we do in Camden.
Right.
So these will be county-owned and run convenience centers. There won't be dumping put in there from companies that are getting paid to take it to the landfill. But we would be responsible. So that's all the stuff that Frank and that committee, uh, Brad Ferry and all of them, that's what they've got to look into and come up with a plan and come up with a feasibility study on cost to bring before y'all and let you know this is something that we could do if we can afford it. Do y'all think we can afford it? And then y'all would look into it and see if that's what you want to do. They're doing the proper process and jumping ahead and making it look like somebody's trying to do something under the table. I don't appreciate that at all for that board because the board, it was sprung on them in that meeting by Samantha from the Northwest Tennessee that, you know, this grant is available in May. Y'all need to look into this. So the board's being proactive and looking into it.
Well, maybe the person that done those minutes, because if you was just someone to look at those minutes, you'd think it was a decision made already and everything. But maybe someone needs to take a little.
You know that every committee is just a recommendation to the full body, right?
I understand that completely. They don't happen all the time.
Commissioner Presson, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, Mayor, Commissioners, Citizens. I'm going to share with you some numbers and facts that I'm going to say will continue to be looked at, continue to be worked on. I'm not even sure of what I'm going to do with these numbers and facts. It's just something I'm drawn to do. Maybe just knowing is enough. Benton County has very little development along its 296 miles of shoreline. Benton County with shoreline development are, their hands are somewhat tied in the reason being TVA owns so much property in Benton County and this property borders most of our shoreline. I have a map that shows TVA owning in Benton County better than 28,000 acres. This map shows it mostly along the shoreline. Of this acreage, 5,332 acres, uh, owned by TVA is managed by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. 4,973 acres managed by the TWRA. A total of 28,973 TVA-owned acres in Benton County. This information comes from the C Task County Commission Handbook. TVA in lieu of tax payments are payments made by the Tennessee Valley Authority to the state for the purpose of replacing revenues that TVA would pay if it was not a tax-exempt federal agency. What this paragraph just tells you, TVA does not pay property taxes, but attempts to make up for it by paying in lieu of taxes, this tax is paid to the state of Tennessee. I'm going to just talk to you and share with you TVA paying in lieu of taxes and the Tennessee State Allocation Formula for these dollars. Of TVA total pilot in 2023 was four, four hundred and ten million dollars. Now for the state's formula for allocating these, these dollars to the counties and the cities. Right off the top, the first 55.2 million TVA dollars goes to the state general fund. These facts are found in my C Task Government Overview Book. The formula for allocating the remaining 354 million dollars. Forty-eight, five percent of that goes to the state. Another 172 million dollars going to the state. Three percent is allocated to impact dollars. This is when construction is going on in counties. It's affecting law enforcement. It's affecting traffic, uh, first aid medical. Uh, so here we go. Forty-eight point five percent or 172 million dollars finally going to the counties and the cities. The formula for these dollars, 30 percent, 172 million of the 70, 30 percent of 172 million dollars goes to the counties on the basis of their percentage of the state's total population. Benton County is like two tenths of a percent. We're not getting much there. 30 percent of 172 million dollars going to counties on the basis of the percentage of their total acres. 30 percent or 172 million dollars is going to municipalities and cities. The county's not getting a penny from these dollars. Now, here we are. 10 percent of the 172 million dollars goes to counties on the basis of the percentage of their land owned by TVA to all land owned by TVA in Tennessee. The 2023 numbers show of the 410 million TVA dollars given to the state of Tennessee, a little better than 18 million of these dollars are allocated to counties with TVA-owned acres within their borders. And it is here where I think the allocation formula is broken. TVA is not the bad guy, but maybe the state's formula for allocating these dollars are. A quick note, the other seven TVA states, Georgia, North Carolina and Virginia allocate zero dollars to their state general fund. Mississippi allocates 12.2 percent. Alabama, 17. Illinois, Kentucky, 30 percent. Tennessee, after 55 million off the top, 48.5 percent. I'm now going to compare Benton County with some East Tennessee lake counties.
President, your time is up. Can you find a, a way to end your comments, please?
I ask you, Chairman, if you tell me to sit down, I will. I would like to compare some East Tennessee counties to Benton County. Their lake acreage parcels, what they're drawing off of, uh, it's really interesting. I think it needs to be talked about.
One minute.
Nine counties in East Tennessee that are lake counties. Five of these counties are on the Tennessee River. Three of them are on Norris Lake. I got all these facts. I got the parcels that's in their counties. I got the property tax from these parcels. I got what TVA pays them. I got the shoreline mileage, the acreage of lake water. Benton County, I'll start with them. 590 lakefront parcels in Benton County. That brings the Benton County $671,000 from the lakefront parcels. So I'm going to start with other nine counties. I'll start with one with the least population. The county with the smallest population, Meigs County, with better than 12,000 citizens, has 1,358 lakefront parcels bringing in better than 1.4 million dollars in property tax. That's a lot of lake. That's about one lakefront property for over 10 people there. Union County, second smallest population, 19,000, better than 19, 1,587 lakefront parcels bringing in better than 1.7 million dollars in property tax, just from those parcels. They also bringing in better than 1.2 million dollars from TVA dollars. Ray County, similar to, uh, Henry County, 1,986 parcels, 2.9 million dollars in property tax, 1.3 million dollars from TVA. You're going to love this. Campbell, 2,311 Frank Lakefront properties, $4 million on property tax from these. That's nearly 50 percent of Benton County's total property tax from industrial, from commercial, residential, farm, forest, property taxes. Rome County, better than 5.7 million dollars from their lakefront parcels. This is 70 percent of Benton County's total property tax. Loudoun, 2,461 lakefront properties, 6 million, 6.3 million dollars in property tax from these parcels. That's 76 percent of Benton County's total property tax. Chairman, are you asking me to step down? I apologize to everybody. I can't continue this. Maybe on another day.
Maybe you can resume next month where you left off. Mr. Lashley, you're next.
I thought Rocky was going to say something about solid waste, so we're going to continue that discussion, but.
I did too, I'm sorry.
Anyway, the reasons of board, you know, Dwayne and, you know, Jerry, is to kind of bring this up. Those grants open up in the spring. We need to be able to identify something starting now, actively looking so we can submit that. Samantha Sheilin's helped us so much to identify, hey, if we can find a parcel, state can help us pay for it and set it up. So that's what we're trying to do. We have a parcel in Holiday already sitting there. So we need to identify something on the north end of the county with the convenience center. It's not next to somebody or whatever, even though I can show you some of them somehow. But on the first Thursday of each month is our, our solid waste. Mr. Jones and Mr. Deaton, Mr. Frey and all of us would love to have you there.
I'll move on. Thank you.
Next is Commissioner King.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, I'd like to see a feasibility study before you go forward. That way I'd like to see what, is there a need for it? I've heard a lot of times we need one, we need one, but do we really? A feasibility study would, would give us that information and also look at the costs and, you know, everything to go with it. So I think feasibility study is very important before we do anything, just about anything we do in, in this government to, you know, increase it. Uh, on another note, Madam Chairman, I would like to bring a point to, uh, under rules of conduct, it talks about open forum to the public. And then if the next paragraph says, who may address the floor? It is a commissioner's right to address the chairperson and the commission at any appropriate time after proper recognition by the chair. It is allowable for non-commission members to address the commission if there is no objection by any commissioners or by a majority above the commission. The chair may set time limits on the time a non-commission member may be allowed to speak. No word does it say, Madam Chairman, that there's five minutes for a commissioner.
What are you reading from?
Uh, our rules.
It's in there.
It's the only, if there's a motion on the floor, there's five minutes left, or a five-minute limit.
That's not the way I've read it, but, because I have read those several times. That wasn't put in those by any of this board. That was put in there several years ago. It plainly says five minutes.
If you're, if you're debating a motion, it says that.
I would like to see that, please.
So we can fill our booster.
Motion. Moving around along.
Yeah, maybe not long.
It says, if you, if you'll allow me, uh, on page seven, when a member desires to speak and debate, discussion or delivery, any address on any subject whatsoever to the commission, member shall rise respectfully addressed, uh, confining remarks strictly to the question under debate, avoiding any language which may constitute personal attack. No member of the legislative body shall speak longer than five minutes on any subject. To me, that doesn't include the commissioner's forum.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say that it exempts it. It said any member can speak. That's what I have gone by was where it says for five minutes. It doesn't say either or. So, I mean, who's going to decide? Is it when you're debating or, or when it is what the other thing that you read in there?
Right. Well, it, it's another reason we need to work on these rules because there's, there's several places where you could, I guess, misunderstand or misconstrue.
I've got those same rules border in everywhere where it said five minutes. I've got those highlighted, highlighted and that's what I have always gone by.
The five minutes only comes about in that part, but that's okay.
I mean, if, you know, if the board wants to change that later, we can. Like you said, we can look into that. I don't think it would be a good idea because we could be up here for an hour or two hours if we let everybody talk as long as they want to. Most counties have a time limit. I do know that.
Okay. I tell you, I, I yield the floor.
Okay.
Still got a minute left.
Said all I need to say.
Number four on the agenda. Mayor, do you have anything to say? Number five is the approval of the minutes. Need a motion and a second, please? Number motion by Commissioner Price and second by Commissioner Hall. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion's carried. Number six is the report of the Public Utilities. We motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Bain and a second by Commissioner, need a second, Commissioner Hall. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution one is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward and the Property Committee to seek permission and authority to enter to a memorandum of understanding in lease agreements with the local veterans organizations for use of the county-owned property at one nineteen Cold Avenue in Camden, formerly the Senior Citizens Center. Have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Bane. Any discussion or any questions?
Correct, I may be correct.
Hi.
We have the memorandum.
Do you want to have the memorandum completed?
No. You'll have to come back for approval for the completed memorandum. There is one in the packet, I believe, that they presented to veterans. Yeah, it's in the back of your packet. But it's a pretty simple lease to let the veterans use that for like a dollar a year or something. We have somebody here from the Veterans Services if you'd like to come.
The gentleman's here that spoke at the Property Committee meeting.
If you'll recognize him.
I'm sorry I didn't write down your name, but you were at the property meeting and you spoke to the Property Committee.
Yes, I was, Madam Chairman.
Okay.
Yes. So the, with the lease and memorandum of use, we have all three organizations that are looking to work together to lease that property. Everything has moved forward with the Property Committee. We are ready to execute. We have a couple of edits that we would like to have discussions about for the lease and MOU itself. Basically, just a couple of ISMs that go along with it and as well as who's going to be responsible for the utilities between all three organizations. Being able to pay utilities would come out of operating funds and we would not be able to afford that. But other than that, that should be something that we can discuss afterwards, after our decision of the commissioners. And we're here to answer any questions that the board might have.
I'd just like to thank y'all for coming. And me and Commissioner Fowler has not, it's not our Paul Jackson ability yet. And I do appreciate you guys coming together as a group and looking to the future. And it's an honor for us to be able to, or I'll speak for myself, but I hope I speak for everybody. It's an honor for us to provide you with a place that you can call your own.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. We're looking forward to it. We want to get away from the stigma that a lot of people have towards a veterans organization. It was mentioned during the Property Committee meeting that this is not going to be a VFW with a bar. There's not going to be any alcohol on the premises or anything like that. It's going to be an organization for the veteran of foreign wars, the American Legion, and the disabled American vets to be able to have their monthly stated meetings as well as fundraiser organizations and a place to kind of run our administrative base out of for scholarships. And probably most importantly, one thing we're wanting to start up with the VSO is a Veteran Affairs kiosk. There's a lot of very elder veterans within Benton County, out of the thirteen-hundred that currently reside in Benton County, that may not have internet access or even transportation to get to a suitable VA clinic, Dover being the closest one. By having a kiosk set up in the, what we are calling the Benton County Veteran Center, AKA the former senior center, we would be able to have access to the internet as well as personnel that can assist anybody who isn't familiar with navigating the Veteran Affairs website. And we'd like to plan for speaking with the VSO, heard to have maybe pre-planned appointments to be able to come there. And it's a good location for us to go to work all three organizations out of. And it's a combined effort between all three. And so by having all three congressionally chartered organizations under one roof, a lot of which, all the members are a member of each organization. I'm an officer within all three of them. It's a, it'll be good for Benton County in the long run as far as our commitment to participating and fundraising and giving back to the public. Here recently, we did the four-H shooting competition during the four-H fair, or excuse me, during the county fair. We want to get as much involvement with the community as possible. And for us being able to have a place to plant our feet would greatly enhance our capabilities and be able to do that. Here, over the past decade or so, we've been meeting out of any establishment that we can get our hands on. We've been at the Country Western Restaurant before. We've been at the church on Washington Street, pretty much any kind of place that we can squat for a period of time. Having this building would give us a place to run operations out of and establish a foothold here and represent Benton County the way veterans should. And so we're looking for everyone's vote for that. But as I stated earlier, there are a few administrative edits that we would so graciously request to take a better look at so that we can better appropriate this building.
Can I speak? Hey, I appreciate your service as well as all the veterans in Benton County and across the nation. I appreciate you guys. We wouldn't be the country we are if it wasn't for you. But we have been working together for a couple of years, waiting on us to get into Senior Citizens New Center corrected. I know I talked to Kevin Miller and a few more of you guys. I think you're still currently meeting at the old Senior Citizens Center, correct?
Yes, we are currently meeting there.
So you and I and the organizations have had that agreement, but this board has decided that property economy needs to oversee it, and I agree with them on that, so we can get the memorandum of understanding and all that, just so there's no problems in the future. Y'all brought a memorandum of understanding to the property meeting last week. Charlie drafted one, and we were going to combine those both. But if this committee wanted to tell us the specifics on that, I think they could go ahead and vote on it tonight. I think it's not unreasonable to say that we owe this to our veterans to give them a place to meet. I think that the building's suitable. Like I said, they've already been using it for months now, along with letting the seniors letting them use it. I think it should be zero dollars in the county pickup bills, but there do need to be some boundaries written in the memorandum of what the building can be used for. You've already expressed that there's not going to be alcohol and stuff. It's pretty simple that you just don't need to be subleased out to other things or whatever. But if we need to combine those two memorandums of understanding, we could do that and postpone this vote until next month if you want us to and run it back through property. That would be up to you guys. But I've been for this since day one. We've just been waiting on the building to come open, and we knew that was coming open. That's why we've gone ahead and let the veterans start using it.
I think we're prepared to ask for the vote now. That way, we can move on instead of kicking the can down the road continuously.
That's up to this body.
Okay.
I'm just saying, I'm good with it. But if you want to wait until we have the particulars settled, I'm good with that also. This is up to you guys. I think we all are on board with this and we all want it. It's just a matter of getting all our ducks in a row. So y'all can give us input of what you want to do on this resolution tonight before you vote. I appreciate you coming and speaking.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on with Resolution one, do we have any comments to make? Commissioner King, you recognize?
Mayor, I think it's a good idea to bind the votes and make it one out of it. I believe the one they brought was really had a lot more detail in it than the one we have, but if we combine, I think that it's great and I agree with you. We shouldn't charge them anything.
If everybody agrees with that, you could just vote tonight on that, and we'll just get the memorandum of understanding, get it signed, put it in the file. I think it's what we owe personally.
Yes, sir. Agreed.
Anyone else? Okay, then we're ready to vote on Resolution one.
My computer is out, yes.
You want to change your vote? Resolution two is a resolution by Mayor Ward to budget funds in the amount of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety cents received from Harper to corporate line items for expenditure to local utilities. We have a motion by Commissioner Holland and a second by Commissioner Murphy. We have any questions about this resolution? Okay, I see none, so the board's open to vote. Number nine, which is Resolution three, is a resolution by Mayor Ward to budget funds in the amount of one hundred and seventy-three dollars from the Anna Florence Trust Investment Income to corporate expenditure line item to fund the current obligation. Have a motion by, need a motion by, we have one by Commissioner King and a second one by Commissioner Price. Any questions about this money? If I'm not mistaken, to Cisco today? I think it does, but... Any questions?
I'm pretty sure it is.
This been, we've had that for a long time.
It just has to be appropriated every year, and it's just the interest of the donation that goes in to be expended every year.
Okay. There are no questions. Everyone, please vote. Number ten, which is Resolution four, it's a resolution by Mayor Ward to increase Benton County's mineral severance tax rate in accordance with the state law. A motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions about the mineral tax? Okay, there are none, so please vote. Number eleven is Resolution five. It's a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds in the amount, budget funds received from an innovative schools grant to the school's budget. Have a motion by Commissioner Holland and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? Okay, there are none, so please vote. Number twelve is Resolution six. It's a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds received from West Tennessee Healthcare to corporate line items in the school budget for expenditure. Have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions? Please vote. Number thirteen is Resolution seven. It's a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds received from Chapter Seven Teacher Bonus to corporate line items in the school budget for expenditure. Have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner King. Any questions? There are none, so please vote. Number fourteen, which is Resolution eight. It's a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds received from the state of Tennessee for pre-K to the corporate line items in the school's budget. Have a motion by Commissioner Fowler and a second by Commissioner Holland. Any questions? There are none, so please vote. Number fifteen is Resolution nine. It's a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds within the school's budget to cover needed line items. Have a motion by Commissioner Fowler and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions about the resolution? There are none, so please vote. Number sixteen is Resolution ten. It's a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds within the school budget to cover needed line items. Did I just read that? Yeah. Wrong, Resolution ten, I'm sorry. It's a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds received from an early literacy foundation grant to the school budget. Have a motion by Commissioner Fowler and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? Please vote. Number seventeen is Resolution eleven. It's a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds received from an early literacy foundation grant to the school budget. Have a motion by Fowler and a second by Melton. Any questions? Number seventeen is Resolution eleven. It's by Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds received from an early literacy pre-K to the school budget. Any questions? This is where we made the amendment to move Resolution sixteen in front of Resolution twelve. Yeah, so Resolution sixteen is what we're voting on first. Sixteen. So I need a motion. We'll see, I'll read it first. It's a resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to appropriate funds in the amount of fifty-eight thousand four hundred dollars from unassigned fund balance of the general fund to an expenditure line item to cover the costs associated with entering into a memorandum of understanding with Kerry Counseling for the 2025-26 fiscal year to provide the IOP program within the jail. Have a motion by Commissioner Hall and a second by Commissioner Bane.
Where does this speak?
Yes.
This resolution is concerning a program at the jail that last year was funded through the OBOA grant funds. That was what was included for those funds that they used for. We had to use all of the funds last year. They told that we needed all of them for that program, and we placed all of them in the program, did not put any other funds, any... And we placed some in the program, did not put any other funds, any other agencies. The funding for the opioid grant came in much less this year than last year, was not enough to cover the program. Budget Committee decided to use those funds for the 24th Judicial District Program, which could be funded through the opioid funds as well as a couple of other organizations. Unassigned fund balance or property tax is never intended to be used for this program.
Commissioner Price?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones is here with us from Cary County tonight. I'd like to ask him a question. Do you ever ask if we could operate for another year, adjusting the program for less money? If it adjusts the hours or whatever we need to do?
We have, we have not talked about adjusting or doing different hours. I believe, if I recall correctly, when I came before this body a couple of months ago, I did say that if there were not sufficient funds to do the 24 hours a week, that we could talk with Sheriff and John Pooian and adjust so that we could provide fewer services per week at a lower cost, yes. But that was not discussed as an option at that point, so, yes.
Thank you.
As I've laid out, these funds would be coming from property tax, unassigned fund balance. It was never the intent of starting the program, it was started to be funded through the opioid grant funds.
Commissioner Bank? Did you want to speak?
No.
Okay. Who else, is there anyone else that would like to comment on this? Okay, Commissioner, Sheriff Christopher, you're recognized.
Thank you. This money that we took, we put into the 24th Judicial Drug Court, as they call it. That's great, it's a good program. It probably takes care of maybe three people that's from Benton County. The money that we're talking about with the IOP program concerns several people in Benton County. And we have, for lack of better words, a captive audience that are doing this while they're in jail. And the program's doing very well. Had no complaints from the inmates, nothing but bragging on the program. And it wasn't one of those programs that the state or something comes along with, where they set up there and they sign up to do it because it's a way to get out of jails for a couple hours or seven classes. This is a good solid program. I work for Mr. Jones, certainly. This is something we need in Benton County, not to give darn where the money comes from. They don't really matter. We're helping people in our county, not just throwing the money out there and let it float over the surface. This wasn't discussed before, I just have a county budget, I don't have anything to do with that one. I'm just asking y'all if you will strongly consider this because it concerns our own people in our own county. And it's a good solid program that's done well. And there's absolutely no reason I can think of, a better way to spend our money in this county than to do for our own. If you choose not to, that's fine, I don't control the money. And when this opioid money come out the first time, it went to the drug court and the rest of it went to this IOP program. They cut the money, there's nothing none of us can do about that, and I'm not condemning anybody, but I do say, we need to put money to take care of our own people in this county. It's a good solid program. And I strongly urge you to do that. I think it's a very solid thing that would be done for some of the citizens in this county.
The 24th Judicial District came to the budget meetings at our request. They have eight Benton County people in that program. Their program is structured differently than the jail. They are out because they are in the program. If they violate any of the rules of the program, they have to act, they do not follow the protocols, then they are sent to jail. So we are providing funds for Benton County residents when we provide funds to play for Judicial District, if they do have Benton County residents in that program. With the jail program, if they're released early, or released before they finish the program, then they don't have to finish the program, which is good. We put all of the funds last year into the jail program. We felt like there was a time to try and take a different path, try something else. This resolution was my recommendation, but...
Madam Chair, Commission, I have the budget that we just voted on and just passed, and the state just accepted it. I've turned to page forty-seven, and it shows Benton County having an estimated ending fund balance of $14.5 million. Turned over to one page, forty-eight, it shows $11.4 million in the unassigned fund balance. Unassigned means we can spend on anything we want to. Assigned fund balance means it's dedicated to certain subjects. That being said, $11.4 million in the unassigned fund balance, ten years ago, I have a 2016 budget at home, the unassigned fund balance was $700,000. That's how much it's grown in ten years. We can afford this program, I support this program. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chair.
Madam Chairman, I was wrong on one of my numbers. They did just have three or four in the program, they now have eight. And three or four of them have already been warrants out on them now, that got that completed this program because of the way it's handled. We have, we've had lesser cityism in our jail from the road on the river. I just want to point that fact out. How did the eight that he speaks of, I thought that number was rich or not, I don't know what he is. But three or four of them already have warrants out on them, used to complete that program because of the way it's supervised.
Any other Commissioner? Okay, we're ready to vote, but we're going to wait just a minute until Commissioner Burke gets back. And then we're going to take a break.
I'm sure.
Okay, Mr. Burke, bye. The board is open to vote. Anybody wish to change their vote? Motion fail, eleven yes, four no. Okay, we're going to take a ten-minute break.
It's appropriation, isn't it?
It is an appropriation, so it did take twelve votes.
Anybody wish to change their vote?
Ken?
Anybody want to change their vote?
Yep, exactly.
Very active.
I'm sorry.
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 Our next resolution was number 12, which now you understand why we voted for Resolution 16 before this one. And the sheriff said to pull this resolution, so I did. Pulled it, yeah, number 12. Okay, so now we are down two. Resolution number 19 on your agenda, Resolution 13. It's by Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds received from a community impact grant to the school budget. I have a motion by Murphy and a second by Bane.
The first thing we need to make an amendment.
Okay, we need to change the name at the top of the resolution where it says Sponsored by Benton County Sheriff Ken Christopher. We need to change that to DOE Mark Florence. I need a motion and a second to amend that. Motion by Mr. Melton?
Do it with Murphy first?
Well. We've got Murphy and Bane, but I think we'll set nothing else.
So according to our computer, it already has the, um... But according to the official record of our system, it already said that.
Okay.
Didn't explain that.
Let's see, we, um, I was, I was saying that the, um, the resolution needs, well, official resolution needs to be actually amended.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. The resolution, this is about the system, the government records, Mark Florence.
We need to now vote, so they...
It's official. Okay. We need to make it official, even though his shows that it's changed. So.
I need a second for the amendment.
Okay. It's, uh, the board's ready to vote on the amendment, which is changing the name. So, as long as it's through the motions, we file that, okay?
Well, it is correct on the, uh, it's correct on the agenda, but it's wrong on the actual...
Yeah. Okay. So that was the amendment. Now we're on the resolution. Do we have any questions about the resolution? I don't. I see none, so please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote?
14 yes and 1 no.
Number 20 is Resolution 14. Resolution by Benton County Commissioners Ward Bane, Fowler, and Price to temporarily move the driver's license kiosk into the mayor's former office in the Benton County Courthouse. Need a motion? We have one by Melton and a second by Fowler. Any questions? There are none, so please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote?
I'll just carry it, keep it hanging. There's hot air.
Oh, selfies, Wanda.
I didn't do that. It's gone.
It's here, didn't it?
It's gone.
It is.
This buzzer gotta hold a bit.
I smell something burning.
This buzzer gotta hold a bit, I'm on it.
I thought this thing was on fire. I can feel hot.
Okay. Okay, y'all, I'm lost. Just a minute. Get back.
I was getting to think that tail could stand up on its own.
We got 18 in front of 15. Yeah, okay. This is another amendment we made. We put Resolution 18 in front of Resolution 15. So right now, we're looking at Resolution 18, which is a resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to appropriate funds in the amount of $30,000 from the unassigned fund balance of the general fund to an expenditure line item to cover costs associated with entering into a contract with block safety to provide license plate readers in multiple locations throughout the county. I have a motion by Melton and a second by Hall. Okay, the floor is open for discussion. Who wants to go first? Okay, the sheriff, you're recognized.
Yes, ma'am. Things have been brought to my attention, one thing, gentleman spoke on the, um, on the screen there, um, that I'm not aware of. I would like for us to, uh, and also, Mr. Fowler brought to my attention that the city got a different price on these cameras. While we got, the city has four cameras, I believe, are in the process of getting four cameras. I think we ought to wait just a few days. Let me speak with block systems, see if we're getting our best bang for our buck, and see where these lawsuits that they're talking about. I don't want to buy something that does not happen. All the different agencies that I spoke with have, they're very high, and I know, you know, what he was telling us tonight, I doubt that that's right. All of that sound like to me that where it's coming from was coming from officers that were using the system, that would have that here, but, um, I guess it was in the big cities and stuff, what it sounded like. So somebody commanding the system was using it for their own purpose. I want to check into it a little bit. Y'all have no objections, just to make sure that we're getting the best price, and that we're not going to get into something that we do have lawsuit, I'd like to put it off for a month, and bring it up again, and then, um, that way I can, I can get some information, bring it back to you, to see where this is going. If it takes longer than a month to see where this lawsuit is going, then we'll put it off until we have some solid information. I have not heard anything tonight about any, until I've got the all-precious great time. I want to make sure we get the money. I'd like to pull that resolution if you don't mind, or tonight, if nobody has any objection. Okay, we'll probably go that far.
You want to pull 15 now, so the contract needs...
Yes.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay, so...
I just want to make sure we're getting what we need, and not getting into something that could be used against. But I would like to explain, I know there's some things going on out here, Facebook, I just love it. I thank people by website. But these are not anything like what they're kind of portrayed as does. It doesn't, it's not tracking anybody. It's only for what agencies across the country put in that they're looking for. Uh, as I said the last time I spoke about it, the murder that happened, it was over here just across the line in Henry County. It was solved in two days by DBI. I spoke with them, the agents that worked it, they said the block cameras is all the way, the only thing they had lead on. A lady was in a rehab center, a block camera was there, and a gentleman from Henry County drove by there, they read his tag, all the tags was going by that, and, um, that connected that with the day she went missing, to the day he was by there. And, um, come back, talked to him, and he had picked her up from rehab, drove here, killed her, and, um, that's, that solved it with the two names. It's a very good problem, and it's, it's excellent for law enforcement all across the nation. And for the price, I think it's a, I think it's a heck of a deal for us. Henry County that's got, or Parrish PD has got several, and says they're getting more. I don't know part of you that the cities that don't have them now, I mean, we've got them out here in Camden too, so it's worried about somebody tracking somebody. That's not what they're about, I want to clear that up. It's only what the law enforcement agencies put in, if there's a silver alert, if there's a amber alert. He is, anything like that, they'll put, they'll put the tag number in there, and that's what it will be, and that information goes nowhere except law enforcement. Hey, it's not speeding, it's not watching somebody, has nothing to do with that. You've got a known felon coming into your town that's been entered anywhere, when they enter this county within 15 seconds, our dispatch will get a call telling you that that person, their vehicle is in the county, and we can be on it. And we get a lot more traffic than you can think coming off of interstate up there, and a lot of it's not good traffic. So I'd like to pull that at this time, and, uh, I will bring it back as soon as I get more information. Thank you.
So we're pulling, um, sheriff's request, we're pulling 18 and 15. So that puts us on Resolution 17. It's a resolution by Sheriff Christopher to budget funds received from various sources in the month of July to proper line items for expenditure. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton and one by Commissioner Hall. Any questions? Are you requesting to speak?
To me?
Yeah.
No, it was just to get Furr's attention with that. I apologize, cancel that.
Okay. Then there are no questions, so everyone please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote?
I'll just carry it, 15 yes.
18's been pulled, so we're on 19. It's a resolution by Sheriff Christopher to budget funds received from a law enforcement training grant to salary supplements for proper distribution. I have a motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Bane. Any questions? I think there are none, so please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote?
I'll just carry it, 15 yes.
Number 26, which is Resolution 20. It's a resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to appropriate funds in the amount of $1,180 from the unassigned fund balance of Fund 171 to an expenditure line item for the purpose of purchasing a new restraint chair for the Benton County Jail. I have a motion by Commissioner Bane and a second by Commissioner Fowler. Any questions about the restraint chair? Okay, there are none, so please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote?
I'll just carry it, 15 yes.
Number 27 is Resolution 21. It's by Benton County Commissioners Rocky Preston and Debbie Bane to provide an additional 1% raise in salary to county employees and appropriate budget funds in the amount of $64,396 for this purpose. A motion by Bane and a second by Key. Floor is open for discussion. Commissioner Melton?
During budget, um, we looked at possibility, we're going on the 3% rights. Since we got further along in the budget, we thought that we had numbers that we could support in years going forward to do a 3% rights, which is slightly above the cost of living. And that's what we passed, uh, in the budget meeting, that's what we, we, and we passed in the budget. Uh, if there was going to be something different or more than that, it should have come up during budget time. This is not the time to bring up adding, uh, to the pipe races. Um, I have no idea where they plan to bring this lead next year and the year after, how they plan to fund this. Uh, but it should have been looked at during budget. Uh, at the budget meeting, neither one of the commissioners were there to answer any questions, and this resolution did not even receive a motion in budget, therefore, it couldn't go forward in committee. So I would not be in favor of doing this resolution this time.
Did budget vote on it?
Budget did not have a motion. It did not even receive a motion to come forward, because that's how, like, I'm going to assume, uh, from not having a motion, that budget did not feel like it wanted discussion, that it should have been done during the budget process.
I hear a lot of eyes.
Anyone else? Commissioner Preston?
In response to, uh, not being at the budget meeting, I just chose working that day. I'm diving in the river, extra money for shells, I really need it, and I just simply worked that day. It takes me to dark to make a good day's pay out there. Budget talked only of a 2% cost of living increase up until late May, and I was glad that they raised it to 3%. I remember hearing the 2%, 2% kind of brought a frown on me, and... 2% kind of brought a friend on me and most all the workers I saw. 3% kind of shrugged your shoulder, you know, that kind of figures. But 4%, 4%, now that kind of makes me smile a little bit. Makes them workers smile a little bit. It's my opinion that the best workers in the state of Tennessee are right here in Benton County. And a lot of them are working for the county. I see their efforts, not just a few, but all. One additional percent will not negatively impact our county. I mentioned it earlier under another subject. $14.5 million in our fund balance, $11.4 million in our unassigned fund balance compared to 10 years ago, $700,000. Our fund balance has continually grown. Retention of quality employees is more important now than ever. Morale is the lifeblood of a well-functioning workforce. Let's keep our infrastructure secure. Let's put our workers on a mountain for a day and tell them how pointed they are. Some of you commissioners have probably been asked or told not to vote for this resolution. We'll vote for it instead, and I promise you, they'll get over it. Let's amend this resolution. Let's amend this resolution and include every commissioner named on it. Thank you, Madam Chair, I yield the floor.
Anyone else? Okay, there are no others, so the board is open to vote for this resolution. Anyone want to change their vote? All she fails, 7 yes, 7 no. And one abstaining, very bold. Moving on to number 28 is resolution 22. It's a resolution by Mayor Ward to appropriate budget funds in the amount of $6,100 to a proper line item in the election commission budget to pay for required equipment for the Benton County Election Office for use in the upcoming special election. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Price. Any questions? There are none, so please vote. Anyone want to change their vote? All she carries, big thing, yes. Number 29, which is resolution 23. It's by Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the amount of $150 received from Johnsonville TBA Credit Union as a donation to the senior citizen budget. A motion by Fowler and a second by Melton. Any questions? There are none, so please vote. Next is appointing notaries. We have three. Sandra Parker, Amanda Miller, Jennifer Stevens. A motion and a second, please. A motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner King for the appointment of notaries. On the voice vote, all in favor of the three notaries I named? Say aye. Anyone oppose? Number 31, is any other business?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to apologize to you and this body about the five-minute thing. I was wrong, and I don't have a problem with it when I'm wrong.
Thank you. I accept your apology. Any other business? I passed out a paper to each one of you about our county commissioners' regional meeting that's going to be next month. Just want to remind you, this is the first time ever that we've held a meeting in Benton County. So, I'm looking forward to that. We'll have several guests there and commissioners from the surrounding counties. So, I'm looking forward, and I hope everyone will mark it on the calendar so you don't forget that. That's all I have. Anyone else?
Same subject. Are we going to have door prices?
Well, we could if we can get up some door prices.
Can we have a drawing?
It's up to us, you know, we're hosting the meeting, so... We might can come up with a few donations to have a few door prices. I'll look into that, okay?
How about a drawing?
A drawing?
How about a drawing like at the squirrel winery?
That's all, I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Melton and a second by Fowler. Anyone oppose? We are adjourned.